Now called to order the December 12th, 2016 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:31 PM at the Minnesota Corum. It was present with all members in attendance. Please rise for an invitation to be given by Mr. Wood and remain standing for the playing legion and honor the Texas flag to be led by Mr. Trump.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you tonight, Lord thankful for who you are. Lord, we're thankful for just the privilege of serving this district. Father, just thank you for all of our employees and for the heart that they have for our kids. Father, pray that as we gather tonight that you'd give us wisdom in our decision-making and that, Father, you'd give us understanding in all that we do. Help us to keep you first in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
32. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Out on the agenda is recognitions from Mr. Harris. We'll present on our holiday card design contest winner.
President Moreau, members of the board, and Mr. Franklin. The New Caney Independent School District celebrates the success of our wonderful art program with our annual holiday card design contest. We have four winners selected from hundreds of entries that represent every school in the district. Each of these students will receive a gift card and a box of 25 cards featuring their designs. First, our elementary school winner is a young man named Mr. Brett Moon, a fourth grade student from Crippin Elementary School. Joining him to receive this award are his family, Principal Crystal Mays, and art teacher Sally Goane. Brett, let's give you the school award here. Okay, so you stand right there, okay.
He's an artist, he's a public speaker.
Our middle school winner is Annika Bishrock, an eighth grade student at Woodbridge Forest Middle School. She's not here yet, so on her behalf, her teacher, Mr. Mike Smith, will come up to receive her. Mr. Smith?
Can we see their work?
Their work.
Are they in the...
They're in their cards.
Maybe we can look in there and see. Can we show those to us?
Well, they've only got the artwork. We'll introduce our two high school awards. Our high school graphics arts winner is Abigail Smith, a senior at New Caney High School. Joining her to receive this award are her family, Principal David Loicano, and art teacher Carrie Barrett. And our high school art winner is Amanda Riddle, also a senior at New Caney High School. Joining her to receive this award are her family, Principal David Loicano, and again her art teacher, Ms. Carrie Barrett.
Oh, because it's a crash in the back there. Is that... The cards ask for the members. Next, we have Dr. Hotchison, who will present the Porter High School Awards.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to recognize a lot of great employees and great students at Porter High School. I'm going to call them all up if they can come up and show you some gifts. Teacher of the month, Rebecca Chang. Student athlete of the month, Nate Rock. Career and technology student of the month, Melissa Romero. Fine arts student of the month, Macy Allen. Custodian employee of the month, Rose Zacharias. Child nutrition employee of the month, Belinda Gutierrez. And transportation employee of the month, Olean Chancy. Instead of me boring you with all of the great things that they've done, I could probably spend all night telling you everything that they've done, we've got a quick video for you to watch and let you get to know them a little bit better like we do.
Remember that people don't define you and expectations of other people don't define you, and it's okay to do yourself even if it's a little weird.
Just enjoy what you do, because if you don't enjoy what you do, it's not going to be satisfying. And to me, this is a very satisfying job.
That you're willing to do whatever it takes for the common goal, whatever you're trying to accomplish for that day, whether it's a field drive that you volunteer for, and that you're willing to do whatever job they want you to do at the moment, and being able to change and adapt on the spot.
I have my masters in December, and I tell them what that was about and how I did it and how that might affect me or the district in the future. And so I'm just really open on my job, and I think that students really appreciate that and see the bigger picture and how it's important.
Maybe some kids come through the line and this is their first meal of the day, you know? Someone's going to need that night, or, you know, it feels really good when they go, "Oh, miss, that looks really good," you know? That's good. So we like hearing that kind of stuff, and of course, we like these children too as well.
My part has always been make sure the children get to school and back on safety. That is a main part of a school district driver's job.
To like become a leader, you must be a follower before. I like to compare it to what Dr. Schleyen told me, like once you're like a higher level instead of a teacher, you can't forget you were a teacher, you know? You have to remember where you came from.
Every one of us has the ability to lead, but to be an effective leader in a community, we must have a passion of service. That's exactly what the following individuals do every day for the Porter High School and New Caney ISD community.
Stay focused in what you're trying to accomplish. Getting off track's very easy, but when you're able to stay focused in whatever you're trying to do, whether it's athletic, exponential, academic, the more focused you have on your task at hand, the better you'll be.
Nate Rock presides as a focused athlete on the field with numerous athlete of the week and all district awards every season since freshman year. But Nate takes his leadership as team captain from the field into the classroom, as vice president of his class and deputy president.
Being a cohesive unit, I think that's the biggest thing I try to do as a leader is make sure that as a group we're together in the same goal and we're aligned in what we want to accomplish.
I think it's really important to have a growth mindset, and I just try to teach that to my students. If you ever have a problem or something that you failed in, instead of taking it as a failure, I think it's important to grow from it and learn what you can do better.
Rebecca Chapman masters the science of leadership by creating positive work and classroom environments, creating assistance to qualify lab safety in the classroom. Ms. Chapman continually provides leadership and guidance for her peers and students.
Even if you get through to just one kid that year, you're winning. You're a winner, and you've done an amazing job. I mean, how many people can say that their job actually makes an impact in the world? Truly makes an impact. So even if you just affect one student's life in some kind of way, then you've made a huge difference in the world.
I believe it's just being there and letting them know that I am here, that in case if they do need something or anything that I can help with, I'm more than happy to.
Rose Zacharias is the person everyone goes to when they need a smile or a good laugh. Ms. Zacharias's positive and humble personality lightens up the halls of Porter High School where she now works, having served the New Caney ISD community for the past 20 years. Being awarded a player of the month, Ms. Zacharias knows how to enjoy her job as much as she enjoys fishing, camping, and ultimately spending time with her family.
It's very overjoying for me, at least I know that what I do, it does come back and, you know, they do appreciate everything that I've done.
Well, I feel like I've been through a lot of circumstances in my life that have like brought me down, but like my pastor always tells me, you can fall so many times, but once you're on the floor, it's not because you failed, it's because from falling, you're going to grow, you're going to stand up, and you're going to become a better person.
Melissa Marengo feels right at home in the clinical practice room where she definitely makes an impact in the community, working alongside nurses at Kingwood Medical. As a state qualifier for the TAFI organization, Melissa understands the need for serving and learning. In addition to her dedication during clinical rotations, she also stepped out of the box and worked with the Boy Scouts of America Explorer Program to learn policy and procedures for CERT, Community Emergency Response Team.
And I feel like a lot of people don't understand that term. They think that once you fail, like you're done, that's like you're quit, that's like your ending point, and I feel like that's a lie. Like you can fall, and personally, as a Christian, I've fallen to my knees, and that's a sign of victory to me. And I feel like every time somebody brings me down, it's like I thank everybody, I thank God, because all those falls, they've brought me to what I am now, what I am today.
Learn to know each individual's needs and likes. So when we see that one child coming through the line, we already know he doesn't like, you know, he doesn't like mashed potatoes, or he doesn't like bread and buns, or he'd rather have a peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
Belinda Gutierrez knows true compassion, and so do the students she serves. Ms. Gutierrez truly enjoys serving students in the cafeteria and understands the feeling of a warm, healthy meal. She continually helps her peers with food preparation and lunch rushes. One thing's for sure, Ms. Gutierrez will always serve the students at the dock with a warm, caring smile.
And like when the kids come through, you know, that might be the only meal they get as well, and we have a lot of children, we get to know these children, their backgrounds, and they just speak out to us sometimes, you know?
In my family, it's really, it's a really big deal, obviously, for any young kid, but 100% to everything, but the reason I do that is because I'm not here for myself or not for my teachers, so I'm here because Jesus Christ put me here, and if my life is supposed to represent Him 100% of the time, then I'm going to do that, whether it be in, you know, singing in the choir, or turning in my homework, or sitting at a desk.
Macy Allen not only leads by following, she falls without hesitation or reservation. Always keeping God first in her life, everything else seems to fall right into place for Macy. From singing and playing music to writing and reporting for the Spartan News Program, Macy accredits her diligence and hardworking determination to her walk with Christ and strong family values. Beyond her numerous awards and accomplishments in choir and music, Macy's largest accomplishments reside in her willingness to help, serve, and minister to her peers and even her teachers.
I also got a lot of opportunities to help other people in the classroom, and I feel like when I'm able to word to other people, I learn a lot more myself than helping other people understand, you know, because, you know, teachers can't be individual all the time, and so if I'm able to help out that teacher or to help out another kid, like if they're understanding something, like that's been super cool. And so I'm really thankful that a lot of the teachers have given me those opportunities to help other kids, and that's really helped me learn, and it's helped me learn my strengths and weaknesses, and it's also helped me to learn to listen to other people and to watch other people and make sure that they understand what they need to understand.
And if you respect somebody, you will finally get along real well, and the children in this district have really grown.
Olean Chancy's greatest quality is commitment, though she'll probably say it's treating everyone like family. Ms. Chancy enjoys seeing students ride her bus today just as much as she did when she began driving for New Caney ISD in 1973. And at the age of 71, Ms. Chancy continues to care for every one of her students, even as the number of students in the district continues to grow.
When they come up on the bus, if it's A.M., "Good morning, Joey," "Good morning, Susie," it's easier to remember their names now because we're smart guys. You know, the kids lack the one-on-one contact. Elementary, pre-k, they all lack that one-on-one contact.
My name is Al, and I'm proud to serve the NCISD community.
My name is Rose Zacharias, and I am proud to support the New Caney Independent School District support system.
My name is Olean Chancy, and I am proud to serve the New Caney ISD and community.
My name is Ava, Olean Chancy, and I am very proud to serve the New Caney ISD and community.
I'm Isaiah Allen, and I'm proud to serve the NCISD community. Go Spartans!
I'm Melissa Marengo, and I am proud to serve the New Caney ISD community.
Proud leaders serving the New Caney ISD community.
Remember that people don't define you and expect...
Next, Mr. Loicano will present the New Caney High School Awards.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Franklin and the board for allowing us to recognize a lot of our great students and our great staff members here at New Caney High School. So, by the way, Ken, that was an awesome video too. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Our custodian employee of the month, Mariah Garza.
Our child nutrition employee of the month, Miss Bonnie Beasley.
Transportation employee of the month, Amy Johnson. Our fun arts student of the month, Hannah Gauthier. Our student athlete and student of the month, Josh Turner. And our teacher of the month, Austin Hall.
We also have a little short video we're going to play here, and this video is for you guys out here, for all of the work that you've done for as students or being high school, I'm sure I appreciate it. So that was a short video too, so Dr. Power, if you're ready.
Hello, my name is David Loicano, Principal of New Caney High School. It is a great pleasure to introduce some of our staff members and students here at New Caney High School.
My name is Susan Boyzington, I'm the dean of administration at New Caney High School, and one of our responsibilities is to ensure that our testing days run smoothly for the students and staff here at New Caney High School. Our cafeteria manager, Bonnie Beasley, is an integral part of that process. She's always very accommodating and flexible, and we just appreciate everything she does for New Caney High School.
Bonnie Beasley has been an employee of New Caney ISD for four years. We want to thank Bonnie for always being flexible and working hard to make sure our students are fed. Mariah Garza has been an employee of New Caney ISD for six years. Mariah works hard to keep our school clean and will go out of her way to help us. Jessica Schultz, custodial coordinator, had these kind things to say about Mariah.
I've known Mariah for five years now, and Mariah's worked for six years. She's very dependable, she's a hard worker, good team player. She actually trained me when I started. I really enjoy working with Mariah. She's always happy and excited, very, very, very hard worker.
Amy Johnson, bus driver for New Caney ISD, has a smile on her face during her double run in chapter eight. Jonathan Powell had this to say about Amy's efficiency.
Amy Johnson drives a school bus for us here at New Caney High School, and she actually does the double run. She picks up and leaves with the first group of kids and comes back and gets the last group of kids every single day, because she has so many kids that ride in the zone that she drops off at, and she is always happy. She always has a big smile on her face, and the kids are always happy to get on the bus. And even the ones that she has to pick up late, she comes in and those kids are happy to get on the bus, and they know that they can count on her to be there quickly every single day. I really appreciate the effort she does for New Caney High School.
Hannah Gauthier is an outstanding member of varsity choir. She is also a member of theater, in which she was the lead in the musical Wizard of Oz.
Hello, Ms. Hannah. First things first, I would like to tell you that I feel like this award is something that you definitely deserve. You stepped into the musical for me in the auditions happened last year. I knew it, I saw you, and I said, "That's my Dorothy." And I can't thank you enough for all the wonderful things you've done for the program itself. The musical is something that we've been wanting to build and to make spectacular, and you have really brought us there with your job with Dorothy, your leadership in our program, really the other kids love you so much, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that you've done, all the late nights, all the rehearsals, the memorization, absolutely everything that you've done for us, and I love you.
Josh Turner is a four-year member of FFA and is currently president of the NCHS Fishing Club. He is also a valued member of the football team. Being the president of the Fishing Club also allows Josh to be a member of the Principal's Student Leadership and Advisory Committee, also referred to as the Sliders.
One of the things that really stood out about Josh is you always really knew, you knew where you stood with him. He's a very serious guy, and he kind of helped cut out all the play-in and all that stuff in practice. Josh played defensive tackle for us this year. He was awesome. He came so far and made a lot of progress this year. I always felt like he was coachable, that he tried to do what he was asked to do, and he was hardworking. By far, the best game this year for Josh was our annual Battle of the 59 against Porter. I believe he came out with three sacks. Just played extremely disciplined, played very well.
Hey, Austin, this is Coach Pennington, and I just want to tell you congratulations. It's really a big deal to be considered and to be chosen for this award, and very well deserving. Just wanted you to know how much I appreciate your work ethic, just how you interact with our kids, really makes it, you know, you have a personal touch and outstanding job. Really proud of you, proud for you, very well deserved.
Austin Hall is a tremendous job for us here at New Caney High School. Not only is he a teacher, a great teacher, he's also a great coach, and a lot of people realize the amount of hours that teachers and coaches put in, and he does not make a big classroom one bit, he puts 100% effort in there, as soon as some toys class, and I'm very glad that Austin is part of the Caney High School.
All of the hard work and effort put into this school, really gives you something to celebrate.
Thank Mr. Loicano and Dr. H for the videos. That was a little different twist to the awards today. That was really nice. Out of three on the agenda's consideration of the 2015-2016 financial audit presented by Ms. Shelby Lacks.
Good evening. We'd like to thank New Caney ISD for having us back again this year. We had a little bit of a name change going on with our merger this year. We used to be Hartford Lieutenant Sergeant Carcom, and now we're Weaver, and we're proud to present your audits this year. And we'd like to thank Brandy and Matt for their department. They do a great job and make our job much easier when we come to business here. I entertain these questions as we go along, please don't hesitate to ask. I would start you out by looking at page 13 of the audit report. You can see that those statements that are governmental type, or excuse me, government-wide financial statements, they show your full accrual method of financial statements, which include long-term assets and long-term debt, which is not what you look at on a monthly basis when you adopt your budget and you look at the monthly reports each month. So if you look at net position on that page, it's about 4.1 million, and you flip over to the next page, 15, and look at general fund fund balance of 24 million, those are not the same number. They are two very different numbers due to measurement focus. And some of the NDA in the front talks about a 12,000 guys in all view of what happened throughout the district.
All of the hard work and effort put into this school, it really gives you something to celebrate.
awards today. That was really nice. Out of three on the agenda's consideration of the 2015-2016 financial audit presented by Ms. Shelby Lackey.
Good evening. We'd like to thank New Caney ISD for having us back again this year. We had a little bit of a name change going on with our merger this year. We used to be Hartford Lieutenant Sergeant Carcom, and now we're Weaver, and we're proud to present your audits this year. And we'd like to thank Brandy and Matt for their department. They do a great job and make our job much easier when we come to business needs here. I entertain any questions as we go along. Please don't hesitate to ask. I would start you out by looking at page 13 of the audit report. You can see that those statements that are governmental-type, or, excuse me, government-wide financial statements, they show your full accrual method of financial statements, which include the long-term assets and long-term debt, which is not what you look at on a monthly basis when you adopt your budget and you look at the monthly reports each month. So, if you look at net position on that page, it's about 4.1 million, and you flip over to the next page, 15, and look at general fund fund balance of 24 million, those are not the same number. They are two very different numbers due to measurement focus. And some of the NDA in the front talks about a 1210 thousand mile view of what happened throughout the district during the year. So, if you're interested in some nighttime reading, that would be a good approach. On your page 15, you'll see your general fund, which is a general operating fund of the district. It had total assets of 31.6 million, mainly cash investments, liabilities of 5.6 million, mainly income for wages, deferred property taxes for those that were not collected as of year-end of 1.8 billion, resulting in fund balance of 24 million. The debt service fund is where all those property tax millions get set aside to pay down debt that you used to build, you know, fixed assets within the district. Total assets there were 5.7 million. Total liabilities were 119,000. Deferred property taxes, 717,000, resulting in restricted fund balance for debt service of 4.9 million. Capital project spend is where those bond issues get set aside to build all the projects. That's where all that money gets spent out. You had $70 million there, mainly cash and investments, as we would expect. Some liabilities for 3 million, mainly accounts payable, resulting in restricted fund balance of 66.9 million. The non-major funds in the district are those federal, state, and local grants, and for the most part, they have money come in during the year and out within the same period. So, you don't usually see a lot of fund balance there that carries over from year to year. Page 18 gets you a reconciliation between your long-term assets and liabilities to the short-term focus. And then page 19 is basically your income statement for the district. It shows your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, your general fund, I mean operating fund, had 122 million, mainly from state revenues. Total expenditures of 119 million, resulting in an increase in fund balance of 2.7 million. Debt service fund had 23 million revenues, mainly the property taxes and local revenue. You made your debt payments that were required of 23.9 million, and you did a refunding bond this year to have some savings in the future on some debt payments, resulting in a slight decrease in fund balance. Capital projects fund had some small interest earnings, and you spent 24.9 million dollars in projects, bringing its fund balance down to 66.9 million. You had some, on page 22, some fiduciary assets. Those are assets that you hold in a custodial capacity for student activities. The notes to the financial statements didn't have any significant changes this year. You know, last year, we implemented GASP 68 for pension, and we added multitude of pages. No big items there this year. We did a little bit of prettyen up on the investment, but no, nothing major this year. Page 37 shows your long-term debt, where those future monies or bonds need to be spent. You had net bond payable of 368 million and pension of about 30 million. And you can see the debt schedule on the next page for that long-term debt. I'll get you to look now at page 51 for your budget versus actual. And I know you all look at a monthly budget versus actual, so this won't be a surprise. You can see this year, you had 1.1, almost 1.2 million more revenues than anticipated, and you expended 2.4 million in expenditures more than you anticipated. You had really claimed to have a deficit, a decrease in fund balance of 927,000, but were actually able to recover that and include 2.7 million into fund balance this year. Page 52 talks about pension, gives you some statistics from last year. You can see there was a question at one point about why did the pension increase, that net pension liability double this year? And that mainly happened for three main reasons. One, that number is an estimate, and the actuarial report makes some assumptions and estimates, and they estimated that the investment earnings would be a lot more than this year than they anticipated, you know, or that they would be a lot more, and they didn't come through. So, that was one issue that you saw. And then you also had an increase in your proportionate share. And when you increase the proportionate share, you also increase the liability and the pension cost. So, the main thing to know is that, and you as a district have paid in your portion, your required statutory requirement each year, and those other numbers are based on an estimate, and they work towards paying that liability at a varied future date. I would get you now to turn over to page 88. This is your schedule of findings and question costs. And I would say, if you, if somebody might ask you what happened in your audit report when you left here today, this would be the good page to look at. It gives you very good summary. You can see on the financial statements that we issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, meaning that's a clean opinion. We didn't find any material misstatements. There were no material weaknesses in internal controls, nor any significant deficiencies, nor were there any non-compliances that were material to the financial statements. You all are held to a higher standard because you expend 750,000 or more in federal awards, so you're required to have a single audit. And you can see that the major programs we tested this year were special ed and the TIP-TAF grant, and we issued a clean opinion there as well, and did not see any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. I entertain any questions anybody might have.
Is there a motion to approve the 2015-2016 financial audit?
Second.
Motion been moved to second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Out of five on the agenda's review, the plan of finance, take action to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of school building and refunding bonds, establishing the parameters for the bonds, and delegating authority to the administration presented by Mr. Ledgley.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to thank the auditor for going before me after the videos. Normally, we get these beautiful videos that get everyone excited, and then I come up here and all I have is numbers. So, I would like to thank Ms. Lackey for doing that. It's good to be back. I think last month, we gave a similar report, and I'd like to cover, excuse me, a few things today. So, are you going to control?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, the first screen there, the chart that you have, is our same bond buyers index municipal bonds. To the very far right of the graph, you'll see that since post-election, we've actually had a slight increase in interest rates. We're currently at a 3.78% to the far right of the graph. The bottom-left corner is January of 2001. So, this is a chart that we've graphed over an extended period of time. The average is across the middle at a 4.39%. So, although we're up off of record lows that were set in July of 2016, we're still below historic averages in terms of our interest rate market. And it's very hard to see, particularly on this screen, but we're actually down a few basis points from the peak there in the last week. So, we've tended to stabilize here over the past week, although it was a pretty quick run-up there post-election in interest rates. The stock market graph, for those of you reading the financial news, has done the same thing. It's been in the same direction as our interest rate market. On page, the next page, is a look at our permanent school fund, AAA-rated school bond market. Basically, for a one-year maturity, we're looking at 1.3%. For a 30-year maturity, we're looking at a 4.35%. And again, although these are not the record-low levels, it's not terrible when you can borrow money at 4.35% in a 30-year. So, on an average, our traditional 30-year bonds, on average, are running about a 4% level in average interest rate, and that's what's illustrated on this page. The next page, page four, is again a slide from the last month presentation where we were talking about planning for growth and so forth. The current bond election that we're working under that was approved by the voters in 2015 at 173 million was based on a five-year growth model, a three-year bond issuance, taxable value growth at 7% per year, average daily attendance growth at 7% per year, and some utilization of excess INS fund balance that has built up over time. And as you flip to the next page, again, the current status of our bond program is our tax base is a little ahead of schedule. Our average daily attendance count is basically on schedule. The drawdown of excess INS fund balance is basically on schedule, and we're in great position to issue the remaining authorized but unissued bonds of 83 million with your approval here in December of '16 for a sale and issuance of that 83 million in January of 2017. Again, at the tax rate that was promised with the voters, at the time frame that was promised with the voters, and on budget with what was discussed as part of your building program and the matching of the construction of your facilities. On the next page, when we layer in the 83 million, which is shown in yellow there, this graph is kind of hard to read, but we do receive state funding, which is shown in light blue and light green, bringing down our net payments that we have to pay for out of our tax base, which are the accumulation of the blue and yellow bars. But the significant reason that we put this particular chart in is that you see on the far left slight increases to 2018 and 2019 in your annual budget for your principal and interest payments, but it's flat thereafter. So, all the growth that you see in your tax base and in your student count is where we get the bond capacity to address the next generation of facility needs. So, when you look at a flat payment schedule there with a slight drop-off on the back end, again, that's where our bond capacity comes from because you continue to grow in tax base and continue to grow in student count. So, we've not over-leveraged out to the future. You have some ability, as you come into the next year, to begin planning for future facility needs and have some bond capacity to match that, as we'll talk about more at a later date. On the next page, you do have a couple of approaching optional redemption dates or call dates, and these are the dates that we utilize to refinance bonds. And you've refunded existing bonds every year since 2010, and in some cases, twice in one year. So, 10, 11, 12, 13, all the way through where we are today. And you saved about 26 million in accumulated interest costs by each of those refundings. So, when you think back to that first graph and you see those valleys in the market, we take advantage of those valleys in the market to refinance existing bonds at lower interest rates. If those valleys aren't there, then we just patiently wait until we get into the future. So, we can react according to whatever the market delivers to us when we refinance bonds. And again, you have an outstanding track record of reducing the interest cost on your existing bonds, and what that translates to for this district is capacity to be able to address the next generation of facility needs that you most desperately will have as you continue to grow. The two that are highlighted in red on here, you are adopting parameters, delegating authority to the administration to refinance and refund those bonds for interest cost savings, if in fact, we're able to achieve it. And that's also a part of the order and motion that you're making tonight, in addition to the issuance of the 83 million of money for new construction. So, on the next page, the target that we're looking at is we're trying to save 500,000 out of the smaller remaining balance of 2008 bonds. You've refinanced the majority of that in 2016 for significant savings. This is kind of leftover housekeeping refunding that I'm talking about here. And then the next one, the 2009 bonds, we're putting a minimum level of target savings of 1,008. And that's the second bullet point, and that's the type of savings that we're hoping to achieve. If we can, then we'll do the refunding. If we can't, we'll be patient with it and do it when the time allows and the market allows. The next slide, real quick. Board meeting here in red, December 12th, to review the plan of finance and authorize us and the administration to proceed. Basically, all the documentation and disclosure will be prepared and established by the first of January, and then sometime in January, we are likely to sell the remaining balance of the 83 million, lock in that interest rate, and deposit the money into your construction fund in February, after the attorney general's office reviews the transaction and gives us the green light to close. And then on the last page is the suggested motion of adopting the order authorizing the issuance of these bonds, both school building and refunding, establishing the parameters for that, and you're delegating authority to the administration to complete those transactions with us in 2017. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have with respect to where we stand in our bond model or the outlook for the issuance of the 83 million.
Well, Charles, what is your outlook on interest rates and how quickly they'll rise?
Yeah, they, I've had this discussion today. It's very, very difficult to predict interest rates because interest rates are contingent on everything else that you can't predict. For example, I would say it was a 50-50 prediction. You could be on, you could flip a coin, you'd be on one side of the election results, right? In fact, most prognosticators on TV were saying that it was going the other direction. Well, if you can't predict the outcome of the election, you can't predict the outlook of the market reaction to the election, and so it's very difficult to predict. We've had a very quick run-up. I would call this, quite honestly, a speculator's market, speculating on what will come out of the results of this, what policies will come and how they will impact it, and what will be the international economic flows as a result of this. You know, I said when it was going up that this is an overreaction, which is very typical of our markets, whether it's stock market or bond market. This is an overreaction. It went up, it went up in a hurry, and then it got to that point, and people said, "I'm not sure the fundamentals have changed here," and it came back down. And that's what you see on the very far right of that graph. You know, we're in a market today, we were up five basis points. Five basis points in a day is not unprecedented, and it's very common, but that is a five-basis-point reaction in the opposite direction of where we were going over the past week and a half. I would like to think that we're in a market where we'll settle down over the holidays. We'll open up January with what would be more of a fundamental market trading rather than speculative trade. So, that is a long-winded answer of saying, "I don't know where interest rates are going." If you really force me to say what I hope for, I hope for some stability in this market where we're at.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the order authorizing the issuance of school building, refunding bonds, establishing the parameters for the bonds, and delegating authority to the administration?
Second.
Motion been moved to second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion is approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
Out of five on the agenda's open forum, we have nobody assigned that's speaking open forum. Out of six on the agenda's closed meeting, the board will now meet closed meeting on the authority text of government code section 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, government code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and government code 551.072 for deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of your property. Any action resulting in closed session, discussion will take place after the board recon meeting is over meeting. The time is 7:20. The board ends its closed meeting at 8:30 p.m. We'll now reconvene and open session. Out of seven on the agenda's reports and proposals, the board members, continuing education report. Each year in December, the board president is required to announce whether or not each board member has met the required continuing education training. All board members have met the training requirements with the exception of Beth Pricke and Todd Trout, which were just elected in November 2016, and have not had adequate time to meet this requirement. I know they're already starting on some of that, and by this time next year, they'll be in good shape. I don't worry, that report comes out 30 days after the election. State law. Out of eight on the agenda's superintendent's report, we'll start with Pricke.
Michelle. Good evening. One of the job descriptions we're asking for your approval tonight is instructional coach. So, I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we did to develop that and what that role would serve as that role would provide on campuses. So, we looked at several job descriptions for instructional coaches for surrounding districts, and the principals spent time looking at those, and with our ultimate goal being that we wanted to improve instruction on our campus. We want to provide the highest quality that we can. And so, we've provided the last few years focused instruction on literacy, and we've had several cohorts go through. And what we're wanting is what we think the missing link is on our campus sometimes, is teachers go to this great professional development, and they go back to their classroom, and they try these strategies. feedback, and support, resources, things like that. As our district continues to grow, we need more teachers, it's going to be even, even more necessary. Right now, at elementary, we have a math-science specialist, and we have a reading social studies specialist, too, and we have almost 500 teachers. And so we think that that could help support teachers and give them resources and things like that. We also have times where we pull teachers off campuses and we get subs, because we have to provide professional development, or they go out of district for professional development. And what we're wanting to do with these coaches is to provide that professional development to them, they could be the person that goes out of campus, off-campus, and out of the district to get trained, and then they could come back and share that professional development with our teachers. So that would drastically reduce our need for subs and having teachers out of the classroom. Do you have any questions?
One at the campus?
Two at the high school.
Two at the what?
Two at the high schools.
Two at the high school, and then the middle schools, just one?
Then you said that's already, you've already posted it?
Well, if some of our, you want to explain about some of our coaches are actually not master teachers, we have them in dual roles. They're listed as maybe RTI specialist, and they're not, it's really not centralized, and the instruction of what they're getting is not coming from the district level, I'm saying. So we want to make sure everything that's coming from the curriculum department strays down to the campuses, and they have the support that they need to implement what we've asked them to implement.
Yeah, and a couple of our elementary campuses, we have some instructional coaches that are paid for out of title money that all the principals chose on those campuses to use their funds. But what we're finding is, we only have a couple of them, and on those campuses, we have support for the teachers and resources, and some of our other campuses, we don't provide the same support, and they don't necessarily have the same message. So one of the things with instructional coaches, we can make sure there was consistency, but also the coach could provide some differentiating instructional mechanics for teachers that's smarter, that's smart route.
You have to wait till.
Or one-on-one teaching and things like that, etc.
Would this be an additional piece reevaluation process on a teacher?
I would not evaluate teachers.
But they'll be in there with the teacher?
We don't want them to evaluate the teacher.
But if they find that there's an issue, they could come to somebody above them?
Yes, we want them to coach, we don't want them to be.
But if there's a problem, they would address it?
The administrator will address it, yes.
Any questions? Out of nine on the agenda is consent calendar consisting of consideration minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of pension reports, consideration of personal reports, consideration of donations, consideration of revised list of those certified appraisals under approved alternative appraisal systems, consideration of revised list of exempt courses for UIL eligibility purposes. Any questions? So motion approved, item on the consent counter?
Second.
Motion been moved to second. All those favor say aye. All those opposed, motion is approved. Out of 10 on the agenda is consideration of approval of bond 2015 change order presented by Mr. Grant.
He's going on vacation, isn't he?
Yeah, I want for every day. Maybe for a month. You deserve your shirts. I'm not cutting my hair. The, what that is, is it's to allow Matt to take over the signing of the change orders of less than $50,000, $50,000 or less on the projects that we're doing right now. It'll be presented to y'all in the consent calendar and the update, but if we gave y'all every $50,000 change order, less than $50,000, and we'd be spending a lot of time waiting for things to happen. So y'all gave me the opportunity to do it, and now we'll be leaving, and Matt will have the right to sign those for Richard. There are other things that he already signs, but most of those say in our wording, the superintendent's designated. So this is the only big one that we have.
Any questions? So motion approved, the bond 2015 change order?
Second.
Motion been moved to second. All those favor say aye. All those opposed, motion is approved. Out of eleven on the agenda is consideration of elementary attendance zones for 2017, 18 presented by Mr. Grant.
Yes, sir. What we've got here is in your board package, you have the attendance zones, new attendance zones for Dogwood Elementary. We gave y'all about three years ago, and we presented a, what was going to happen when we moved those kids, because they're going to go to Tavola to the new school, we just moved them all over. Now we're having to move some of them back, and we had to create attendance zones for it. In your packet is a sheet that shows current kids residing in those zones, residing in those zones, and then what the projections are for the 17, 18 school year, and that sheet looks like this. And then in there, there's the old attendance zones, the current attendance zones is what's called, and then the proposed attendance zones are in there. And it's pretty simple moving those kids back, they're all going, you know, it's going to, projections for Dogwood Elementary is 807, and the projection for Tavola is 536, and the reason with that disparity is that Tavola's going to grow. They have houses on the ground out there, they're going to grow into that number, and probably by the time school's over with, the end of next year, they'll probably have 650, 700 kids. But we didn't want to have to say, let's make them even, and then next year move another batch of them, and next year move another batch of them. So we tried to do it all. Those of y'all aren't familiar with the way we do attendance zones. The district is divided up into units, planning units, that look kind of like this, should be in your board book. And we started off, we started off with 13 census units about 15 years ago, and then we've broken into smaller planning units, easily defined, hard to change, group of kids. We can keep up with when they're moved, how many times they're moved. Our goal of the district, since I've been doing it over the last 15 years, is never to move a student more than once in their elementary career. So we stuck by it all, but about two times, we've had to move a group of kids twice in their elementary career. But other than that, we try to, we balanced attendance zones like that, we balanced schools sized by that, make sure our schools are all laid out. That's how we've managed our schools in the last 15 years that I've been doing it. So these are zones for the 17, 18 school year, for Tavola and Dogwood.
Is that West Line for Tavola basically Peachtree?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. We moved, they let you know, we moved some kids from the Canyon Elementary to Tavola, we moved the Tavola kids to Dogwood, and then we moved some kids off of 1485 that are at Oakley, we moved them to Dogwood so that the bus ride wouldn't be so far. We worked with Student Services, we worked with Transportation on making sure the routes fit, so that we wouldn't get ourselves in a binding school start.
And the projections on the student enrollment is just based off of, that's not like actual?
The one that says current is what currently goes there. The projections are what we project for October of next year off our benchmark of October.
What's the difference in the, I mean, if the transfer students to special programs will percentage each campus, I mean, we look at?
Those are not included in there, those are, because they change. And I will throw out the word practical capacity to you again, but programmatically, you know, until special ed and all the other special programs decide where they're going to put kids, we cannot determine that. And they're going to be moved around. And I know they've had the discussion this year about moving special needs programs around and things like that. So when that happens, that changes the practical capacity of your building. You have a capacity of, let's say, 800, and now you bring in a special needs program that there's three kids per classroom, that takes, that capacity of 50, it takes, turns it into three. So now you're down, you know, because of the needs of the kids that are in the building, the size of classrooms, what programs are in there.
Transfers include employee transfers, or should?
Employees transfers are included in this, because, no, out-of-district transfers of employees are in this because they're assigned, the building is their address. In-district employee transfers just reside at their house.
Any other questions?
When will that be posted online?
Soon as we sign it approved.
January 2nd. No. After y'all approve it tonight, we will give it to them, it'll be, it'll be done. Student Services, I'll turn to Scott, Student Services will send out a letter to the kids that are affected. And so they'll take care of that part of it.
When's your last call? You'll take the call from the last night?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is our motion approved, the elementary attendance zones for 2017, 2018?
Second.
Motion been moved to second. All those favor say aye. All those opposed, motion is approved. Out of 12 on the agenda is consideration of 2017, 2018 academic calendar.
Good evening. Okay, have you guys had time to look at the calendar? Maybe I can ask you some questions if you have them. We took the calendar that we had this year and looked at, can we duplicate it? Number one, we could not, because, I don't know if you've read the emails, sort of gone back and forth, but we cannot start school until there's three complete weeks in August. That is the law. Okay? So that's why we're having to start later than usual. We put the professional development at the beginning of the school year, was at the end. Basically, when we talk to our teachers, we have two situations. One, we have teachers that are leaving the district at the end of the year that really, really couldn't care less what they're hearing from us. Two, we don't have our rookie teachers coming in. So we thought about trying that professional development at the beginning of the year, front-loading, so hopefully it'll be a little bit more successful. The teachers enjoyed it at the end of the year, but we were just missing a set of teachers by losing and then the ones coming in. The reason why we started, or why we're ending the semester late, basically, is we are losing a week of instruction by starting later, we want to gain it back. Those kids need that extra week, because we want to end the semester before Christmas break. That's what's best for kids. When we ask our students, what do you want from the calendar, that's their number one answer, is that they want the semester to end before the break. This is tough, for them to come, miss two weeks and come back and take finals.
We've done that before.
Yes, we have done that before, and when we, our students, they fuss about it, and our teachers do, too. It's tough to do. So really, other than that, there was a couple of options on when they wanted to take their workday in January. We had three actual calendars that went to vote, and this one was 53 percent.
Is there any interest, looking at any District of Innovation, you classify as a District of Innovation, to avoid that third?
There is, there is a lot to District of Innovation, and the, so the decision to do that is something that collectively we would have to do as a district committee. We could go and talk a long time about what that entails, it's just not as simple as saying, hey, we're District of Innovation. There's a lot to it. And we have to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a situation where we can't do what we need to do as a district because of the challenges that we face, such as the growth that our district is experiencing. We have to make sure that District of Innovation is a fit. And yeah, the, I said, the flexibility with scheduling is a benefit, but does it, that hurt us more than it helps us?
Two years ago, we applied for the initial.
We did.
To become a District of Innovation before they expanded it out.
And we didn't.
And we didn't receive it at that point in time. And one of the discussions we've had over the last two years was, well, the district is the fastest-growing poor school district in the state of Texas, are we in a position to do that and deal with some of the hoops you've got to jump through to do that? And we haven't felt that that was our best option at this point, to do that, so.
And we could keep looking at it, I think, and it's not something that we're just saying no way. I just think that we just have to be very careful that we don't bite off more than we can chew. Does that make sense?
Does going down that road handcuff you in any way as a district?
Well, there's just, there's just a lot of things, red tape, and.
Even more red tape?
Yes, and so, you know, we have a lot of rules now, and so just by releasing some of the constraints on one end gives us constraints on another end. And so which side do we want, which way do we want to go? You know, we're doing some pretty innovative things right now, with our number one initiative. You know, you look at our facilities and what we're doing in our classrooms, you look at our flexible seating in our classrooms, and we're, it doesn't look like the normal setting that did 10 years ago. So we're doing some great things. I don't know what the benefit of the District of Innovation would do for us that we're not already doing without someone with the constraints, too.
And our initial thought process, when that was initially brought to bear, there were only, how many districts across the state?
Not many, 30.
30, maybe? And that's the group that we, because that was a lot different than what they're calling Districts of Innovation today. We were very interested in that, because it was really freeing you of a lot of those constraints, and we were really interested in getting that. We didn't make it, so this is kind of the revised version of that, because it stopped there.
We could go into and talk about it a long time.
But it's changed dramatically.
And I think it's a sledge ledger, this session is one of the interesting, I don't know what's going to happen to that.
Yeah, that initiative.
I'm not so sure that won't be tossed.
Yeah, it's an interesting.
Okay, I'm at recommended.
Do you have questions? Is our motion approved, the 2017, 2018 academic calendar?
So who?
Second. Motion been moved to second. All those favor say aye. All those opposed, motion is approved. No further business meetings adjourned at 8:50. Everybody have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.